Mr. Chairman, this is Tom. We are ready to record.
Recording in progress.
He will let you know that Ms. Dong is gone for the day. She's under, she's not feeling well, so that's why she's not.
Ah, okay, so that, alright, so we're now a six-member board. That I didn't know.
No.
And I believe, and I believe Mr. Fortune has to leave at 2:30. Is that correct?
I do. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call again the hearings for 10:30 and 11:30, and 12, and the 12 o'clock cases to see if anybody is gonna defer, so that might alleviate some pressure or some strain.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna stop the 10:30 hearings. I'm gonna call any deferrals and withdrawals for 10:30. If there's anybody that wants to defer or withdraw their project, if you can give me the address first.
221 East Eagle. I don't know if that's 10:30 or 11:30. I apologize.
Uh, I think that might be 11:30, Mr. Lynn.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay. Are there any 10:30? Hold on to that thought for a second.
I, I think we already did the 10:30 deferrals.
Yeah, but I'm gonna recall them again, because we lost another member.
Alright.
Okay, so Mr. Lynn, what was the address for 11:30?
It was 221 East Eagle Street.
Okay, and that's just that one, okay. For the record, calling DOA 125699221 East Eagle Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Lynn's 245 Summer Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, it appears we will only have a five-member board at that time, and therefore requesting an administrative deferral.
I'll make a motion to defer.
I'll second that motion. Secretary.
Alright, Mr. Fortune?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Ruggiero?
Yep.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
And I am also in support. Motion passes. Alright, so wait, which, which one was, this was?
221 East Eagle.
221 East Eagle.
Is that correct, Mr. Lynn? 221 East Eagle?
That's the one we're definitely deferring, because I believe there's a recusal on that. That will be a four-member board. I believe 279 Maverick would actually not have a quorum if you lose a member and we have another recusal, so that was the reason for my request.
Well, hopefully, hopefully we'll get it before we lose another member, but we'll, I, I mean, there's nothing we can do. This is, for some reason, this agenda is packed.
I understand.
Too tight, and we will just do the best we can, and if we get to that point, you'll have to make a game time decision then, so.
Is Webster Street on? I believe they wanted to defer. There was.
Yes, Aaron here, 295 Webster.
Alright, hold on two seconds, sir. I just wanna call into the record. Calling DOA 1267825, 295 Webster Street. Name and address for the record.
Aaron Daniel, 40 Ever Street, 295 Webster Street. This is subject property. Requesting administrative deferral, please.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
I'll second, Eric.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yep.
Mr. Robinson?
Yep.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
And I also am in favor. It's a, a motion pass, motion passes.
Gratitude.
Well, I know it's an administrative deferral, but we're actually into January, so I don't, we'd have to do January 10th at 11:30.
Understood.
And I believe, Mr. Lynn, we need to give you a date, too. That would be January 10th at 11:30 as well, for 221 East Eagle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's roll.
Alright, that concludes that.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Fortune, Mr. Chair, Attorney Ryan Spitz?
Yes.
So I was hoping, so it appears that I, so I have a rediscussion at 11:30 that I just have to circle back with my client, and it appears that we're gonna only have a five-member board prior to them making the decision, so when you call the 11:30s, I just, if I can ask that.
Yeah, I'll recall them again as I recall.
And then, one other issue that we have is I have the, the rediscussion for 82 through 84 Boston Street that has been, has had two previous administrative deferrals based upon having a five-member board. We would move forward with, with the motion for reconsideration if we had a six-member board, if there is any way of hearing that out of order.
I, you know, no, I, I apologize. It's certainly not your fault. This is a, a problem with just the, the making of the board and the extent of cases that is coming before us, but we have to call, we have to follow the agenda, so.
Okay, alright.
Make a game time decision on that one as well.
I, I will. Great, thank you.
I'm gonna call the first case for 10:30. Calling DOA 1354097139 Carson Street. This is reduce the first floor deck size and add a second floor deck to the back of the house with a spiral staircase to violate, to accommodate a new deck entry. The violation is Article 51, Section 9, side yards insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Alex Minter with NEDC, representing the clients who own at 139 Carson Street.
Alright, tell us what you're proposing, please.
Uh, so the project is a minor interior, the, the client owned, owned an occupied unit on the second and third floor. They're looking to demo their existing first floor deck, decrease it in size, and install a second floor deck, so they have egress from their second floor to their rear yard. The project of our, the house as it is, is already within the setback, so any work goes into the setback, which is why we're looking for relief. We'd originally proposed with a spiral staircase, and then after a review with the neighborhood meeting and association, they recommended going further into the setback and, in order to not have a, the spiral staircase and have a traditional staircase on the side, which if you go further down should be the amended plans.
Okay, but you are, there's an existing rear deck there, in which you are replacing, and if anything, you're reducing it in size?
There's an existing first floor rear deck that we're reducing in size. There's not currently a second floor deck.
No, 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 I understand that. So, my point is that the rear, the side yard and rear yard violations are pre-existing conditions?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Well, shoot, I thought this was gonna be quick. So, I only have the spiral plans. I do not have the adjusted plans in my pack, so I, I'm unable to review, but I don't see any issue with what they're proposing. I understand what he's saying, so I would be comfortable if we could move forward with, I mean, we have the incorrect plans, they just don't, they show the spiral stair, which I'm fine with anyways, but not sure how we wanna proceed on that, so.
One, one way, one way to proceed would be to go ahead and act and then hold the, hold your stamp until you can look at the, the final drawings.
Fine, I'm happy with that. We can keep going. Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause those should've been sent along after the ONS.
I just don't have them, so. Okay, we'll figure this out. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Anybody, any questions on the board? Anybody wanna testify either for or against?
Morning, or good afternoon, rather. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Austin Brighton Liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, here to report that the, having completed their butters meeting and their civic association, at this time, our office is aware that the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association voted to support the project with the proviso that they not do the spiral staircase previously mentioned, as well as a reduction in deck size. With that said, as always, we'll defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Maura McCray from Councilor Brighton's office. Councilor of Lake to speak in support of this project. Thank you.
Hi, Annabelle, go ahead. Chairman, members of the board, Annabelle from Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
I have no additional raise hands at the moment.
Mr. Chair, Secretary, sorry about that. We do have a few letters of support. We do have one letter of opposition just opposed to the project.
Okay. Alright, can I have a motion? And I think, I think we can frame the motion in such a way to, to deal with the, the issue of the plans.
I'll give it a try. So, I'll make a motion to approve the proposal with the adjusted stair, which appears to be more traditional and rectilinear, I assume, and I will withhold signature until those plans come through the process for final approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright.
Mr. Fortune? Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yep.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. The motion passes.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 1341344, 635 High Park Avenue. This is tear down the existing structure at 635641 High Park Avenue, tear down the existing house at 1002 Canterbury Street, which is, which are in common ownership. Combine both lots to create 11,920 square foot lot, and erect a new mixed-use building containing 27 units and one commercial storefront. The violation is Article 67, Section 11. The MFR is forbidden in an NS sub-district. Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 33, traffic visibility across the corner. Article 67, Section 8, retail use is forbidden in the 2F5000 sub-district. Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 67, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 67, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. With me today is Travis Blake, who's the architect, together with Tony Ferrara, who is the applicant. 635 High Park Ave in Rosendale, zoning is both neighborhood shopping and 2F5000. The lot size is just under 12,000, 11,920 square feet, and it's located at the corner of Canterbury Street and High Park Avenue. This is the former Erie Pub Building, which many of you knows. Since that, it housed the Delicious Restaurant, which was unsuccessful and ultimately closed several years ago. The proposal is to raise the existing bar building and condemn single-family to the rear, which is located at 1002 Canterbury Street, that it busts the train tracks. Both these buildings are in common ownership and construct a new building containing 27 residential units, one-level retail space, and 14th street parking spaces internal to the building, accessed off High Park Ave to the left of the building. The parking ratio is determined by the Article 80 process through the BPDA. Also, there is a, a common roof deck that will be set back, that is access to stairs and a headhouse. As far as violations, one of the violations, which Mr. Fortune read out, under neighborhood shopping, that is multifamily residential isn't allowed use in a neighborhood shopping. That's a mistake on ISD. So, we have off-street parking in this district. You have two. We're proposing 14. Use multifamily residential and retail are not allowed in a two-family district. The entrance to most of the building is in the NS district, which the uses are allowed. FAR allowed is one, we're 2.26. Height allowed is three stories, 35 feet. We're four stories, 42 feet. Front yard is 10 feet. Existing front yard is zero. We pulled that back to widen the sidewalks. We're 5 feet, 3 and 1/2 feet, and rear yard is 10 feet. We're at 13 feet, so there's no violation there. As far as the unit program, first floor retail is 914 square feet. On the first floor, we have bike storage and bike repair. That is 533, 3 square feet. There are 18 one-bedroom units with an average size of 663, um, 63 square feet, 9 two-bedroom units and average size of 887 square feet. This proposal went through an Article 80 process and was approved by the BPDA Board on June 16. We've worked extensively with the BPDA, BTD, Traffic Engineers, and the Public Improvement Commission. As part of the work, the developer has agreed to install additional curb and widen sidewalks and create shorter crosswalks to traverse High Park Avenue. Additionally, this proposal far exceeds the affordability requirement, as will contribute approximately 19% affordability of five units, which will be three two-bed units and two one-bed units. We went through a good community process and supplied the board with 30 letters of support, including support from the, the District Counselor, as well as the State Representative, and we're all here to answer any questions. Sorry if I spoke quickly.
Yeah, we're grateful you spoke quickly.
We appreciate it.
So, okay, so this is a pretty dense, you're pretty much covering the entire lot, and these are relatively small units. Is, was there a particular rationale in, in designing such small units?
Uh, yes, they were, because of the demographic, demographic of the people that they thought would buy here would be skewed toward younger or empty nesters, so that's why they're skewed toward the one-beds and the two-bedroom units.
Okay, I mean, these are, these are not micro-units and.
No, they're certainly not. No, they're not.
But, but, well, they're not macro-units either, I was, that's for sure. Okay, can you explain, once again, explain the parking?
Sure, so initially, we were into the BPDA with a much higher parking ratio, however, through that process and the fact that this is right on High Park Avenue with four bus lines going back and forth to Forest Hills, they wanted us to reduce that to a 0.5 parking ratio, so we're just over that at 2714 parking spaces.
Okay. Alright, and there is a roof deck here, right?
There is. There's a roof deck that's accessed through, has both a stair and a, a headhouse. I know your position on that. It would be, it's, we're at a common roof deck. We can't make accessible hatches, but that's something we could work with the board on.
Alright, I mean, there's no elevator in the building, is there?
Uh, there is.
There is.
There is?
Yes.
The building's fully elevator, and the elevator goes to the roof deck. That's one of the reasons, the headhouse.
Okay, so the headhouse, so there has to be a headhouse to, to capture the elevator?
Correct.
That is correct.
Alright, well, that makes it a little different. Alright, how are the drawings, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, drawings are good. You know, I think it is, it's a prominent quarter, and I think it's, it's doing a fairly good job considering the slope of the site as well, because it slopes up quite a bit. I think with the increased affordability at 19%, I think that the, the project has some, some nice aspects to it, so really have no other questions about the proposals, so, thank you.
Are, are these all rentals, Mr. Pulginie?
Uh, yes, Mr. They are, yes.
Okay. Any questions on the board?
Uh, just a quick question on the affordability. I appreciate the 19%. Can you talk about the income limits for those affordable units?
Absolutely. All of those units, Ms. Piñato, are at the 70% A-line.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Is anyone here to, to speak either for or against the project?
Utrino Chilo from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to confirm that we did receive all of those letters, including the one from the Neighborhood Association, Waka Thosendale, and Representative, um, sorry, Representative Con, not Con Salvo.
Russell Holmes.
Russell Holmes, okay, thank you. So, we did receive those. They were all in support. I haven't received any letters of opposition from the community so far, and we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Matt LaCher, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Councilor Ricardo Arroyo's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. As stated, 90% affordability is what we favor. It's for a place, a long lean vacant commercial building with new housing and high affordability, and as stated, State Rep. Holmes also supports this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
No, I didn't want to. The secretary here, we do have a couple of letters of support, but we also have one letter, one letter of opposition opposed to the project.
Hi, I'm Adriana Chilo. I live on Aberfield Road, Rosendale. I've lived in Rosendale over 50 years or so, um, and I drive through this section every day in the afternoon, going to work and coming from work. I think it's about time that we do something with that corner. It, I'm really looking forward, and I'm in fully support of this project also.
Alright, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Minor parties representing the carpenters union would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sol, Councilor of Lakeview, Plare, he comes to go record in support.
Thanks.
Cindy, go ahead. You're the last person.
Um, this is Cindy, she's from the Council of Legends Office. We would also like to go on record and support the project.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have Alfredo here, last person. Can you say?
Hi, I'm Alfredo of Alado, 640 High Park Ave. I've been here for over 30 years. I'm in great support of the project. I think we need to change on that corner. I agree with the other person, Adriana. I, I'm in support of the project, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yep.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
And I, to him, in favor. The motion passes.
Thank you, everybody. Following a next case, calling DOA 129579963 Waldex Street. This is proposed 15 rear addition. We're gonna figure out what that means. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, owner and occupant, Jenny Tom.
Yeah, could you, we, on the proposed purpose, it says proposed 15 rear addition. What is that?
Uh, 15 rear addition. I'm not sure, but the total square foot, the foot that we have for addition was 1,080 square feet.
Mr. Fortune, it's, there's a, it's a 15-foot addition.
It's a 15-foot, okay. That's what I was, I didn't know what, what it meant. It just said.
Alright.
Yep.
Thank you. Can you, tell us what you're proposing, please?
Uh, we're proposing for additional for the first floor, second and third floor, because my parents are handicapped, so we're hoping to have the accessibility for them on the first floor with the bathroom, and also, basically for the bathroom, the, the living room for them, the bedroom, the bathroom, and basically more accessible for them on the first floor. And then on the second and third floor, it's because we have a, a large family, so they usually come visit my parents, and they can stay over because they live far from out of state, which is in Texas, California, so we would like to have more space, basically, for the family.
Okay, so we're talking about a three-story, 15-foot addition. Is that right? I, I can't, I can't tell from the drawings.
It's, it's a single family. It's a three-story, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any elevations in the drawings? Okay, there we go, yeah.
It is a three-story, but the third floor is set back, sort of offset three-story, because of the, there's, they're adding a walk, like a terrace walkout to, from the third floor to the back on top of the addition.
Uh, okay, alright, now, now it's, it's very clear. Okay, Mr. Mr. Robinson, any, any thoughts on the drawings?
Nope. No questions about the proposed scope. I think it fits with the, the neighborhood. It's not, it's not oversizing the house itself or anything that it's, I think it works pretty well. No questions.
Okay, and the, and the, the side yard is actually.
It's existing.
That's a existing condition, okay. Alright, any questions on the board? Is anyone here to speak either for or against the project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of the board. We held a butters meeting for this proposal in January. There were, neighbors were mostly in support. There's one neighbor who voiced some concerns regarding potential for being used as like an Airbnb, but other neighbors were very supportive of the opportunity for the family to have access to their ancient grandparents. They also received support from the local civic association as well. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raise hands at the moment.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Yep.
Mr. Robinson? Uh, yes. Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
I, to him, in favor. The motion passes.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 1360285301 Mount Vernon Street. This is to construct a new, approximately 75,000 square foot fieldhouse, athletic complex with indoor field, tennis courts, indoor walking track, fitness training rooms, classrooms, event space, also a cafe with outdoor seating and 45 surface parking space. The violation is Article 6, Section 3. Off-street parking facility is located in restricted parking overlay district. Article 6, Section 3A, the off-street parking facility located in restricted park, parking overlay district is restricted parking district. Article 65, Section 15, ancillary parking is consistent, is conditional. Article 65, Section 15, community senate is conditional. Article 65, Section 15, auditorium is conditional. Article 65, Section 15, the use of accessory cafeteria takeout restaurant is cap, is conditional. Article 65, Section 15, the use of outdoor place of recreation for profit is conditional. Article 65, Section 15, the use of private grounds for sports above ground is conditional, and Article 65, Section 16, the building height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I will be recusing myself from this. This is Eric.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Paul Momney with Gulson Stores. I live at 27 Parkton Road, Jamaica Plain. I'm joined today by Bill Richard with the Martin Richard Foundation, who, together with the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester, are the proponents for this project. We're also joined this, this afternoon by Rhodey Architects, the project architect. The proponent is seeking relief associated with the construction of an approximately 75,000 square foot fieldhouse at the property located at 301 Mount Vernon Avenue in Dorchester. The project will contain fitness facilities, classrooms, a teaching kitchen, a cafe with outdoor seating, and other amenities and programmable spaces. The proponent was selected by the Boston Club of Schools as a designated developer of the site, and entered into a ground lease establishing site control in March of 2021, which stipulated development of this project. The project's site is located in the Community Commercial Subdistrict in the Dorchester Neighborhood District, and the proponent is seeking a variance to allow height in excess of 45 feet, various conditional use permits to allow certain project uses, and an ARPod conditional use permit for the operation of an off-street parking facility containing 45 surface parking spaces. We're also seeking a conditional use permit for ancillary parking to allow the parking lot at the project site to be loosed for overflow parking by the neighboring McCormick Endeavor Schools. In March of 2022, the BPDA voted to approve the project and issue a scoping determine waiving further review under Article 80, and in June of 2022, the proponent entered into a memorandum of agreement with the BPS pursuant to which the fieldhouse will be made available to the McCormick Endeavor Schools for educational and recreational programming during school hours, as well as certain nights, weekends, and during school breaks. Thank you for your time this afternoon, and as I mentioned, the proponent and the project architect are available to discuss any specific questions the board may have.
Alright, well, thank you very much. This is, this proposal's a long time coming, and I know a lot of work, effort has gone into it. Just a, just a reminder, this is a five-member board at this point. reminder, this is a five-member board at this point with, with, uh, Mr. Robinson's recusal, but I assume you are choosing to go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, can we have, I, most of the violations that are involved are conditional use violations, uh, because of the, the nature of the project, but it would be helpful to have the architect, uh, uh, walk us through the programming of the, um, the project.
Sure. Uh, Ken, this is Kevin Devoe, Principal of, uh, Rody Architects. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll, I'll try to, uh, sum that up. Um, the purpose of the building uh, is a fieldhouse for, uh, recreation that, uh, really maximizes the potential for this, this site, um, to, um, to achieve its, its, its mission. Um, there are hard courts, um, inside the facility. Um, then there's a turf field on the, uh, upper level, uh, on floor three, a second floor which includes a running track. So we're really maximizing the amount of recreation that can happen in this building. Uh, due to the kind of, um, aspirational sort of aspects of this project, we do want this to be a highly utilized building by the, the community. It's a community asset and a community amenity. Um, so the pieces that kind of go along that are conditional uses are, are things like the cafeteria, um, which is, is the definition, uh, used by zoning that we felt would be appropriate for a cafe that we're, we're providing at the ground floor so that if people are spending a long time here, uh, which we hope they will, uh, they'll need that amenity. Um, there's also an auditorium, um, which we felt was an outgrowth of the, of the programming that we did, um, with our, uh, youth advisory panel, um, that this is a, uh, an athletics-forward, uh, project that starts started there. Um, and the, the, the nature of adding an auditorium allows for theater and arts to have a place in this building. So it's due to the kind of, uh, um, you know, I guess once-in-a-lifetime aspect of this building, we did wanna, um, create an umbrella of a lot of different uses. So, um, we also have Bill Richard, um, who could probably talk a little bit about the program because that's actually a very key feature about this, uh, about this project.
Um, we're welcome, Mr. Richards', uh, participation if he, he wants to contribute anything. Um, but I have two questions in particular. One, it has to do with access and, uh, and who, who, how do people get access to it? Who will be, who will be able to use it? What ages? Um, and also what, what will be the hours of operation?
I'll probably defer that question to Paul. There was an MOU with BPS, uh, that specifies that very issue.
Yeah, and, and in the meantime, I, I can address that. I, I think Bill needs to be made a, um, panelist. I'm not seeing him listed. Um, so that, access to the, the building will be available during certain school, um, designated time slots to all students of BPS. And then off-school hours, the, the access will be limited to students who are members of Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester, which I believe, Kevin, you may correct if I'm wrong here, that any, uh, Boston Public School student can become a member of Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester for just a dollar.
Five, five dollars a year.
Five dollars a year, that's right. So, so, um, so, membership is not, uh, required to access for school sanctioned events that are, are run through the McCormick Endeavor Schools, uh, but for kids that do want to use the after-school programming or, or, or weekend programming that's available, uh, the very affordable membership to Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester is available.
So the school sanctioned events are only during school hours?
So they're, they're not necessarily just during school hours. Um, pursuant to the MOA, the, there, there's designated time during each school day, uh, but there's also, um, a, a system for allocating certain time during the evenings, uh, the weekends, and school vacation time that the schools and the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester, uh, will alternate by programming. So, uh, for example, um, if there were to be a sports event, uh, after-school hours, the school, uh, in the beginning of the year can, can designate certain times that the facilities will be available for exclusive school use. All school students can come over during those times, um, and, and use the facility for those purposes.
And are there age limits for, uh, for use and access?
Um, that, I believe the membership is limited to, um, under eighteen, but that, that would really be a question for, um, Bob Scanell, the president of Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester. Um, there's no age limit for use, uh, during school sanctioned, um, events. So if there's a student who is above the age limit, um, that's coming, um, with the schools, there, there's no limit there. I just don't know if there's a, um, maximum minimum age for the membership in the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester.
Okay. It's, it's really, um, due to the, the process that we've involved, um, and, and sort of referencing that, that wide umbrella. Uh, the Harbor Point community, um, nearby neighbors, other neighborhoods, um, will have access to this building. It's a, a low barrier of entry. Uh, so in fact, we do believe that seniors will, um, want and, and have access to this, uh, due to the walking track and the ability to, um, get access. There, um, was a, um, another sort of aspect of our program is the inclusion. Um, the, the fact that, um, we are really making concerted efforts, uh, for people with physical and neurological diff, disabilities to, to have programs here. Um, another reason why a lot of the programs sort of started to, uh, take on what we're calling wraparound services to this, uh, kind of magnet of a building. Um, so the elevator access and the easy access to all levels, um, it is overtly an inclusive and accessible, um, building, so.
Um, I see that, uh, Bill Richard, uh, requested to be a panelist. Could he be made a panelist so he can, uh, can, contribute to the conversation?
Yes. I think I may be now.
You are, Bill.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, well, I, you know, well, what's been said since I was gonna try to answer some questions, but, you know, I, try not to think of this in like the traditional club model, you know, in terms of age limits and things like this. Think of this as like a, as a space that you might know of in, you know, uh, out in suburbs where, sure, during the school year, the thousand kids next door to the McCormick and the Dever School are gonna have incredible access to this, as will other kids from BPS, but in evenings and weekends, it's gonna be open. It's gonna be open for everything from our challenger sports and, and, and use for team sports with kids with developmental and physical disabilities, but also AAU basketball on weekends and tournaments and that sort of thing. So it's, while there'll be a membership model, because that's how the club works in terms of a membership model, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a membership model like the, the, the club currently operates on Deer Street or the Clubs of Boston or the West End House model. It's just gonna be more, more open than that. You know, you won't be required to have a membership card to get in, but membership kind of like the, you know, the commercial says will have probably certain privileges, I suppose, if you are a member, and there'd be very little reason not to become a member, but it's not gonna be a requirement. Um, this is not, um, your, your typical, um, um, Boys and Girls Club model facility. Uh, again, think of it more similar facilities out in the suburbs where, where you go for, for team play and that sort of thing, but, but we're doing a lot more here with the, with the, uh, the flex spaces and the, um, um, you know, the enrichment services, and Kevin mentioned the wraparound services. You know, we're gonna have health services for kids, social services for kids. We have counseling space set aside. Um, we have, uh, quiet space set aside for parents who have, um, who have kids who are dealing with autism, uh, kids with autism, we know, um, don't particularly, um, always like the, the loud sounds coming from, uh, from a busy basketball court, right? So we've kind of taken a lot of these things into consideration and really trying to offer something for everyone. Think it'll be a great.
It sounds, it sounds like the, uh, problem will not be lack of access, but, uh, that, that you're gonna have an overabundance of people who are gonna want to use the facility.
Thank, that's why it's seventy-five thousand square feet, I suppose, right? Yeah.
Okay. Uh, any questions on the board? All right, uh, let's take testimony for or against. This is a pretty exciting project.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the community, including the Columbia-Savon Hill Civic Association, have been in full support of the proposal since it was first filed in September of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, and the BPDA board voted to approve in March. At this time, our office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim McEppert, City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in the support, on this, would like to go on record in support. Strong support.
Thank you.
My number ten.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris representing the carpenters union. On behalf of hundreds of our members that live and work towards city boards, we enthusiastically like to go on record in strong support of this project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, like a very present to go record and support.
Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve of BPDA design review.
I'll second that motion. The secretary?
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
And I am an enthusiastic yes as well. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one three four five seven four one seven Chestnut Street. This is a total building renovation, expand living space into the basement and fifth floor. The violation's Article fifteen, Section fifteen dash one, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, with the mailing address of one thirty Beach Road, Orleans. Uh, Mr. Chair, this is a building located in a two, H-two-sixty-five-zone district on the high side of Chestnut Street in Beacon Hill. Uh, it has gone through a very thorough community process and was amended twice. Initially, we were proposing a change of occupancy to a two-family dwelling, which the community had some concerns about, and it reverted back to a single family. You were expressed opposition to a proposed, uh, hatch roof headhouse for access to utilities. That was removed and access was provided from a sloping roof line. The only expansion of living space occurs in the basement, uh, and that requires a digging, uh, excavation of approximately two feet, four and three-quarters inches, resulting in a proposed height of eight feet, eleven inches. The site is not in an E, uh, a G-pod district. It is high on the hill. Uh, the FAR is two, the existing FAR is four point six eight, and the proposed FAR is five point two three. There are no proposed bedrooms in the basement. There are five proposed bedrooms in this, in the home, uh, which actually is a reduction from the existing bedroom count of eight. Uh, what is proposed for the, uh, basement is a fitness room, den, uh, storage, and utilities.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm curious as to why you're digging down two feet to get that, the eight-eleven is a pretty high ce, high ceiling height.
The existing is, is six feet, six and a quarter. Uh, eight-eleven is to, since it is a fitness room, there would be equipment that would be higher than normal.
Okay. Okay. Um, and this is a single-family home?
Yes.
And it had eight bedrooms?
Yes.
Unusual?
But I, I cite it because we are reducing bedrooms to five.
No, I understand that, but I, most single-family homes don't have eight bedrooms. That's, uh, I'm just wonder, I'm wondering whether it was in fact used as a conventional single-family home or was it used for?
It was the, uh, residence of the roctor of a local church.
Uh, okay. Okay, that makes more sense. All right, um, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Uh, plans are good. No questions. The lower level is below grade, but they are digging it out, um, and there is no bedrooms called out, so, uh, really no questions from me. Um, then the hatch is confirmed on the roof as well, so nothing from beyond this.
Any, any, any questions on the board? Any testimony from, uh, the public?
Hello, Mr. Chair, members of the board. At this time, oh, Maggie Van Squire from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. We held in a butters meeting in August where Director Butter voiced concerns about the work in the basement undermining the foundation of his home, but the applicant has since worked with him and he seems satisfied with the insurance certificate that they provided. This applicant also met with the Beacon Hill Civic Association twice, once in August and once in October, and they stand in non-opposition to this project. And our office has received one letter in support of this project.
Mr. Chair, we do have some letters of support.
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Jar, Mr. Ujero?
Yes, sir.
You did.
Sorry. Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well. The motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I would like to thank you and the members of the board for your service over the years. It's always been a pleasure to appear before the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Thank you. Calling a next, calling a next case, calling BOA one three four six four six six seventy-three Green Street. This is a gut renovation, interior exterior down to frame and foundation. This is a three-hundred-square-foot addition. The violation's Article sixty-two, Section nineteen. Neighborhood design, design overlay district, change in height and the profile of the roof. Article sixty-two, Section twenty-five, roof structure restrictions, and Article sixty-two, Section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, hello, my name is.
I'm sorry, there is building code?
Yeah.
Um, sorry. Seventy-three Green Street. This is, the violation is the ninth addition, seven-eighty CMR, R three-eleven, the means of egress. Seventy, seven-eighty CMR, R three-eleven point one, unit two only has one means of egress. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, hello, Oliver Childs. Um, I'm the contractor, um, of Downtown Abbey's LLC. I'm also the fifty percent owner, uh, on this property. Um, we're looking to.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Childs, when, uh, when we have a building code violation, we usually deal with that first. So can you tell us what, what is triggering that violation?
Uh, for the egress. Are we talking about?
Can you, can you say more?
Um, so we don't have a, um, secondary egress for the upper unit. Um, and we would like to, uh, attend to that by putting in a two-inch, uh, line for permanent sprinklers, um, in the building, uh, just because we're trying to make as much use as, as the space as possible, and a secondary egress would take up a, a big chunk of the, uh, al, already narrow part of the back of the building.
Mr. Robinson, do you see any way to, to accommodate the code?
Uh, I mean, I, I, I think there should be. Uh, this is a gut renovation and, you know, I don't think, from, at least from my perspective, I guess as the representative on the board, I don't, I'm not sure we should be, uh, weighing in on this. I think this should be deferred to the state.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the second means, they might grant this, but I think there's nuances in the code that we typically don't tackle, especially as it relates to a second means of egress from a unit. Um, so I, I would probably make a recommendation to deny the building code, and then I guess we could listen to the, um, zoning case, which I don't have a problem with, and I'm, I have a problem with the proposal in terms of use, but I guess then we could potentially make that approved with no building code relief, and then they would have to go get it themselves. I, I think I'm trying to talk through this out loud, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, what, what you're, what you're describing, thinking out loud, is exactly the, the, the procedure that this board has adopted over the years.
Okay.
Which is, um, that we would deny the, the, the request for relief and recommend that the app could go to the state to get, uh, relief there to see if they can get it, because that's more, that's, that's a more appropriate venue.
So I'll, I'll make a motion for denial of the building code, um, request.
Is there a second? Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
Uh, and I am in agreement. So now let's, Childs, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you're proposing for the, uh, for the, the gut renovation and, and what zoning violations it triggers?
Um, so, uh, it's a two-family, you wanna keep it two-family, but, you know, condo, make them condominiums. Um, the addition is just to really, um, it, it currently doesn't really meet. Um, the addition is just to really, um, it, it currently doesn't really meet modern living expectations, so we just wanted to make the, the middle and the back, uh, just a little wider to accommodate a floor plan that we feel is appropriate for, uh, two families. The roof, uh, profile, um, we'd like, you know, make a, the, the classic flat roof, as you can see there, that, um, in keeping with a lot of other buildings on the street. And of course, the, uh, the issue is the outdoor space that, um, that it violates, so there's, um, it was existing, uh, 678, 350 per unit. We'll be left with 404, um, with the proposed, um, and the, hoping to make up the outdoor space or close to it with the, uh, roof decks.
Okay, um, so, the new flat roof that you're proposing is how, how much higher than the existing, uh, roof peak?
Uh, I do believe it's just under four foot.
Under four feet, okay, and you will access the roof deck from a spiral staircase in the rear from a, uh, a deck on the third floor?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and what is the, uh, what's to give with the addition, what is the rear yard setback?
The rear yard setback is, um...
It, it's exist, they're not actually extending the addition further, Mark, the, um, it's, I think it's staying the same, it's, they're just making it a little bit wider toward the side yard, but not extending further, it's already, I think it's already basically zero, I think it goes all the way to the rear.
Okay, okay. All right, um, uh, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings otherwise?
The, the drawings for the, uh, renovation are, are fine, no questions, uh, besides as we've already discussed.
Okay, any, uh, any questions to the board? Is there anyone here to testify for or against the proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, um, we don't have a lot of information on this proposal, as I mentioned before, we've had some personnel changes, an abutters meeting was held on July 27th and from notes it did seem that the, the meeting was, was very positive, um, we don't have anything on file of any neighborhood concerns, uh, with that we defer to the board, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion, um, to approve with BPA design review and no building code relief.
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
And I'm two in favors, uh, so the motion is passed without proviso.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 139-0679-112, WHITE STREET. This erect an addition and change occupancy from six-unit residential dwelling with roof deck and six parking space. The violation is Article 53, Section 8, MFRs have been used in a 3F 2000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 56, off three parking insufficient, Article 27T dash five, East Boston I five. Article, Article 53, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Richard Lynch, 245 SUMNER STREET, EAST BOSTON, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. I believe we have William Lee from Monty French Design Studio on with us as well if he could be elevated to a panelist. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, this project, uh, involves a pre-existing three-unit dwelling in the historic section of the Eagle Hill neighborhood. Um, the rendering that you're looking at is, uh, obviously the proposed finished product, but if we jump down to, um, I believe, uh, slide five, we can show the existing conditions. Um, our goal here is to preserve the existing structure that sits on the site, the site is, uh, 6,250 square feet, go to the next slide, please, sixty, about 6,200, uh, maybe just one more slide for... Uh, looking for, a little further down? Might have been back, might have been back around slide five, I apologize. Just looking for the neighborhood context. So it's a 6,250 square foot, uh, lot, Mr. Chairman, located in a 3F 2000 district, uh, it's essentially what would be considered a double lot for this district, actually almost a triple lot because, uh, the minimum lot size is 2,000 square feet. Uh, we are proposing to take the existing three-unit dwelling, perform a complete renovation as well as, uh, a restoration consistent with the Eagle Hill standards for this neighborhood and change the occupancy to six units. I would point out that this lot could accommodate two, three-family dwellings on the site based upon both the width, uh, as well as the lot area, uh, we elected to maintain the existing structure, uh, at the request of the community and to, uh, restore as much as we can, uh, back to a, uh, condition that we feel, uh, is complementary to the Eagle Hill square. Uh, with respect to the units, we have a mix of ones, twos and threes, the average unit size overall is about 970 square feet, our largest three-bed, three-bedroom unit is 1,400 square feet and our smallest, uh, one-bedroom unit is about 685 square feet. Uh, by way of relief, uh, if you want to jump down to the rendering, uh, which I believe is, uh, slide 17, uh, just so we can show what the finished product would look like, and I can always jump back to the, uh, plans separately. So with respect to the relief that we're requesting, uh, because this would be considered a multi-family use, uh, we do require relief for, uh, use, again, however, this does meet, uh, more than enough lot space for two separate three-unit dwellings which are allowed in the district. Uh, we do meet the lot width and lot, uh, frontage requirements and our side yard is set at three and a half feet and nine and a half feet, which is in excess of the two and a half feet that's required. Our rear yard does, uh, come within, uh, 22 feet of the rear property line, however, we have worked closely with, uh, buddy neighbors to preserve an existing tree that is in the back of the property, uh, they have specifically requested that we not remove that tree and we've had an arborist go and review this and ensure that the tree will not be removed in the back. Uh, our floor-to-air ratio, the allowable limit is 1.0, we're just slightly above that at 1.06, again, working closely with the Eagle Hill Civic Association members and Director Abutters. Uh, the height of our building remains the same, we are currently at about 31 and a half feet, the height limit is 35 feet, uh, we maintain that height although we are including roof decks with this project with no headhouse, uh, access. Last but not least, we are proposing six parking spaces, uh, a total of eight would be required of the code, but we would be providing one per unit as this is intended for homeownership. With that, I am happy to answer any questions or address any comments from the board.
So the existing, uh, structure is three units?
That's correct.
And you are essentially leaving the existing structure, the footprint, uh, unchanged, correct?
The front of the building, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I thought I had, uh, if we can go back to the earlier slides, I think we have the existing, uh, photos of the neighborhood context, can the...
Well, I, I'm, what I'm wondering is if it's a same-sized, uh, building, how do you get six units or three?
Yep, so our plan shows we are, we are adding the addition to the rear of the existing structure, but the width of the footprint of the building stays the same. Um, so if we, I think we can go back to the, I think it should be early on in the presentation, maybe page four or five.
Okay, that, that was, so, it's, it's the rear addition that, um, how, uh, what, what is the square footage of the existing structure and what is the square footage of the addition?
So the current, uh, I have, just based on the FAR, we're, we're at about a 0.72 FAR currently, we'll be increasing that up to 1.07, so...
Okay.
So the total square footage, I can do the math really quick, I think, uh, William Lee is on, is on the call could give us that, if that was necessary.
Anyway, but it's just like a 50% increase, kind of roughly, right, ballpark?
There, thereabouts, yeah, and again, it's, uh, intended to preserve, you know, this, I know it's important for Eagle Hill to preserve the existing structure that's there and then to add...
No, no, the, the facade and the rendering looks very nice, so, uh, I, I get that. Okay, and you've got six, six spaces in the, in the rear, all right, uh, how are the drawings, uh, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, drawings are good, actually, no, no real questions on the proposal, I, I do, I, I assume we should probably have, here, Mr. Hampton, they, they recommended denial, um, on this proposal, I believe, so, I, it would be good to hear their position on this, but, uh, I have no questions, uh, really as it relates to the proposal.
Okay, well, first, we'll go to Mr. Hampton first, any questions for the, for the board? All right, Mr. Hampton, would you want to let us know what your, your thoughts are?
Uh, yeah, actually, we didn't really have a problem with the use, uh, it was the parking layout underneath the building that we had a problem with, but, um, i- it's not so much the use, really, we like the, the exterior of the building, I, we just had a problem with the parking.
Like access and use or layout?
Uh, then it broke up the massing out back that it's underneath, um...
Yeah, okay.
Just, we actually thought if you, you put maybe some screening or even enclose it, it would, i- it would be better from our point of view, I mean, I guess that's not so much a denial, but maybe something that can be worked with through design review, um, but, uh, yeah, I know when you see denial without prejudice, it kind of stands out at you and it's not so much the use, it's really the parking situation.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, that's helpful. All right, anyone here to testify either for or against?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, that's Holly Ebeneeds with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, my predecessor hosted an abutters meeting for this project on October 28th of 2021, uh, abutters had concerns regarding the initial nu, number of units that were proposed, uh, the applicant also met with the Eagle Hill Civic Association in January and February of this year, the association asked for a reduced number of units, the applicant then reduced the unit count from nine to six. Members of the community were happy to see that this design, um, supports the historic aesthetic of Eagle Hill as well as the parking spaces. The association, um, ended up voting to oppose the project, but the applicant worked with the abutters and, um, responded, feedback provided during the community meetings. Our office received two letters in support from Director Abutters and at this time, our office will answer the projection report, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, Secretary, have one letter of support.
Okay, Madam Ambassador, no raised hands?
Nope, no raised hands at the moment, thank you.
All right, can I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve with, uh, BPA design review, um, and to highlight, I think, look at the screening maybe in, or the buffering associated with the parking in the rear and see if there's anything that can be done in terms of that part of the project to, uh, be more consistent with the designs.
Uh, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
And I support it as well, so the motion passes.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 138-7348, 55 MURIANEAN STREET. This erect a new five-story mixed-use building for three local retail four-inch shell units at ground level and 14 residential units above. In part of existing passageway for erection of building, the two residential units shall be subject to the City of Boston's inclusionary development policy. Violation, just so we, just so we're understanding, this is repetitive, I'm going to do two different zones, so Article 25, Section 5, flood hazard districts, they're in two different parcels, Article 32, Section 4, G card applicability, Article 53, Section 12, the height is excessive, Article 53, Section 12, the rear yard is insufficient, Article 53, Section 12, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article 53, Section 12, dimensional regulations, usable open space, Article 27T dash five, East Boston I five, Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading, and Article 53, Section 57.2, that conforming with existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Richard Lynch, 245 SUMNER STREET, EAST BOSTON, on behalf of the petitioner, Alex Fagel, who is, uh, with us, we do have a G card on this...
Yeah, I was just going to say, let, let Steve go with the G card first, uh, Mr. Semenelli, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon, Christian Semenelli, Boston Rowan Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we do not have either letter.
Okay, but, but, Mr. Semenelli, you have both letters.
I do.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Ujero?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Peñado?
Yes.
Ms. Logue?
Yes.
I'm in fa, I'm in favor, the, that, that part's approved, all right, let's go to the merits of the case.
Great, thank you, if we can jump to slide four to get a, yeah, community overview, we can see the context of the area, this is the perfect, probably the perfect place to start, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this, uh, property is located just on the outskirts of, uh, Maverick Square, it's within, uh, close walking distance, probably a five-minute walk, uh, to both, uh, Central Square, uh, which provides a lot of retail and services as well as Maverick Square, which is, uh, transportation, as you can see, uh, it is surrounded by both institutional as well as government buildings, this is a one-story, uh, commercial space that is located, um, with frontage on both Parrish Street and Muridian Street. Uh, my client operates a dental practice, uh, which is intended to continue, uh, should the site be redeveloped, but as you can see, uh, with a one-story structure, it is a little bit, uh, uh, different than what's in its, um, immediate surrounding context, can we go to the next slide, please? Uh, probably jump to the next slide with the street view as well, maybe one more slide. So, uh, as you can see here, the one-level, um, building does have, uh, local retail included, and as I said, this will, uh, result in an opportunity for Mr. Fagel to continuous practice, but also, uh, create residential housing, the goal is to create a, uh, transit-oriented, uh, development for this site, again, based upon the fact that we're in such close proximity to both Central and Maverick Square, next slide, please? Uh, again, different surrounding context views, uh, as you can see off in the distance, about two, uh, sites over the board approved, a fi, a similar five-story residential building with ground-level retail, this site is located in the neighborhood shopping district, so the proposed uses that we are proposing for the site, including multi-family residential as well as ground-level commercial, are allowed uses, so these are consistent with the zoning, current zoning for, uh, the sub-district that's, uh, that, that the property lies within, next slide, please? So at this time, I'm going to ask Tim Loranger to walk through just quickly the program and the rendering for the building and how, uh, they've arrived at the, uh, the design for this, so Tim, if you could just walk us through that quickly, that'd be great.
Uh, yes, I think between you and, this is our Tim Loranger, we're the part, uh, for the record, uh, so, yeah, um, the, the general mass in the building, we kind of picked up on the massing and the setback in the fifth floor of that property at 65 Muridian that, uh, Richard Lynch had alluded to, uh, so, in terms of kind of the, the massing horizontally, we broke the facade into these kind of two main bays that are, um, kind of typical of the, of the scale of the rest of the street frontage, but maintain that street frontage and at the ground floor, we have a, a, um, masonry exposure of the stone front there, um, and then at the top, at the fourth and fifth level, we do set that, um, uh, six feet to introduce some balconies at those top units and to kind of pick up on that datum that was established at 65 Muridian, uh, if you scroll down a bit. Uh, so here's just, uh, elevation of that front facade along Reading Street, uh, so material-wise, we have that, that masonry brick, we have a metal panel for those main, those primary bays, um, and then a kind of vertically oriented, uh, panel for that top penthouse section, um, to create a contrast material, uh, if you scroll. Thanks, so this is on the, the Parrish Street elevation, um, here, that masonry comes up to the third level to pick up the kind of datum of the existing property to the right here, um, and then we have that kind of two-story ori, orientation of that, of that upper penthouse piece, and then similar to the front, um, for doing it, so at an even smaller scale now, we're kind of introducing these series of bays that again start to kind of, um, kind of erode the scale of the building there, and that would be in that same, uh, metal panel as the front. In terms of the plans, if you keep scrolling? Uh, if you could go past this, sorry, uh, so this is the ground floor plan where we are maintaining those three, uh, individual retail offices at the front along Reading Street, uh, for four retail openings there, and then we are introducing the residential lobby and elevator at the rear of the building off Parrish, which is kind of acquired a more residential street, we're also showing a small, uh, pole here for kind of transformed utility, we will, we will not have any below-grade, um, utility space here. Uh, if you keep going, we can go through through the four plans here, uh, we have a combination of one, two and three-bed units on the second through fourth, uh, through fifth floors, uh, there are 10 total one-bed for an average, uh, square foot of 700 square feet, uh, two, two beds at 885 square feet and two three-beds at 1,165 square feet. So there's generally, uh, three to four units per floor, if you kind of keep scrolling through the center of plans, uh, we do have patio wall conditions on basically three sides, and then we have all of our frontage along Parrish and, um, Muridian, uh, because this is basically an info all around, um, we're holding the street edge on both, um, on both sides of the street deck. On the roof, there's no, uh, the only roof access will be for mechanical equipment, there isn't any shared or private roof decks at the roof level, so we have, uh, small elevator overrun, um, mechanical equipment for the units and then, um, a hatch access from one of the two stairs. and then a hatch access from one of the two stairs.
If I can just, I think this is just the other one, Tim. So if I can just point out for the board, I'm sure the board is aware, Plan East Boston, I'll let Jeff speak to the BPDA's recommendation on this, but Plan East Boston has identified corridors and boulevards as sort of being the transitional areas into other parts of the neighborhood. This lies certainly within the area that higher density and certainly higher heights is being planned, or at least recommended by the BPDA, as part of Plan East Boston. So we believe our plan is quite consistent with the objectives under the new zoning that is likely to be recommended shortly from the BPDA. One of the things I will point out as well is that even though we did show this project as, you know, in the neighborhood shopping sub-district, the neighborhood shopping sub-district has very flexible zoning regulations currently in place, even though the Plan East Boston recommendations are likely to allow even more flexibility. There is no minimum lot size in the district, no side yard setback. The only dimensional control will be a rear yard setback of 20 feet. Because this would be considered a through lot, the zoning code does permit a reduction of the rear yard from the 20 feet to actual street model on the rear property line. So this is a true through lot condition that we're proposing, and that's one of the reasons why we were cited for rear yard. And I think that's based more in part on the fact that we're using multiple lots. So I'm happy to answer any questions from the board. I know the board has limited time here.
It's okay. It's what we're here for. So, I don't, the only question I have actually is for Mr. Hampton, who says that there could be no building code relief. What is, what is that? What does that refer to?
I don't know.
All right, Jeff.
I don't know.
In general, you don't want to be building code relief, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't want it. Honestly, I don't know what that means. I was kind of hoping you were going to look past that.
Can you speak to the IDP units, the size of the units, and the affordability?
Sure. I, I believe we're proposing these at 70 AMI. And we will have, based upon the percentage of units we have, I would suspect one will be a two-bedroom, one will be a one-bedroom.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Robinson, comment or response?
Yep, I wasn't sure what the building code is. I was wondering if related to the vault or something, because that is a, it's a challenge to put a vault on, within a building. So I don't have anything I can think of, but.
Yeah, it's related to the vault.
One, only one question, I think, for the proponent. I think, you know, the massing is actually, I think, knitted in pretty well in terms of trying to sort of balance between the two fronts or two streets. This isn't, this was not an Article 80 small project, correct? This is not?
Correct. It's below, just below the threshold of 14 units residential.
I see some accommodation in the ground floor plane, and I guess I just want to make sure that Embark's very familiar, obviously, with complete streets and things like that. So I just want to make sure there is some other street trees and some other that kind of are on the street, but then they go away. But I'm hopeful that those setbacks are there to accommodate proper accessibility planting zone and sidewalk. If not, then I think that's something we want to make sure happens on this project.
Okay. Good suggestions. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the project?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. That's Holly Ebeneeds with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted a butters meeting in 2021. Some concerns were voiced regarding density and lack of parking, but there were very little butters in that meeting. The applicant also met with Maverick Central Neighborhood Association. The group voted to support the project. The members asked to have the mural that is currently on the rear end of the building be preserved either inside in the reception of the building or in a new location. So we want to make an emphasis on that. The neighborhood group also asked for new trees in the front of the building. Our office received two letters in support, one from a direct butter and the other one from the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. And at this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Minor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Minor Perez with the Carpenter's Inn. Would like to go on record in support of this project.
I have no additional raise hands at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Lynch, the suggestions about landscaping and trees, is that something that has been incorporated into the proposal?
Sure. I believe that we're going to be subject to design review anyhow, so I believe that's something we'll pick up in that, in that process.
Okay. All right, then, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review, I think specifically looking at complete streets and the urban public realm.
Mr. Robinson, this is Tom. Can I suggest including a proviso to identify whichever units are eventually selected to be IDP units, just in ISD's certificate of occupancy here? Just because it's not a Article 80 project.
Yeah, yes. So also, I'd like to define the portable housing IDP units.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Pignato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
Two of them in favor, the motion passes. We're on to 11:30. Only, only a couple hours late.
Yeah. Well, just to remind you, I'm leaving at 2:30.
Yeah.
Case BOA 1367246, 14 Gardner Street. This is seeking to raise the existing structure and erect a new residential building with 38 units and 25 parking spaces. The violation is Article 51, Section 8, 38 units to bed. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient additional lot air per unit. Article 51, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 9, the maximum allowed height has been exceeded. Article 51, Section 9, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient usable space per unit. Article 51, Section 40.5, designed manure ring, two-way aisle, parking design. Article 51, Section 56, R Street loading is insufficient. Article 51, Section 56, R Street parking insufficient. And Article 51, Section 53, screening and buffering. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Me, Jeff Drago with Drago and Tiscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the petitioner, and with me I have Sousa Design, who are the architects on the proposal. As was mentioned, this project is located at 14 Gardner Street. If you could just stay on that slide, Madam Ambassador, for one minute. And the proposal that you're looking at, this is a rendering of the new building. This area is surrounded by multifamily residential apartment and condominium complex. Right now, we are seeking to raise two very gated buildings, and it's a pork chop lot with one building behind another, everything asphalt in the middle. We're proposing to raise those structures and erect a four-story residential building with 38 condominium units and 25 parking spaces. This will also include 40 interior bike parking spaces as well and a bike room that's accessed directly out from the ground level to Gardner Street. Just to point out, this project went through extensive community process to get here over two years. The current proposal is at 21% affordable on this building, and that would be eight affordable units. This building will also have a LEED gold standard for energy efficiency as well. The particular building is, the lot is 16,286 square feet, and the layout, the mix of the units, we tried to have both family style and a mix of different sized units. We have 10 one-bedrooms at 730 square feet. We have 22 bedrooms at 883 square feet, and eight three-bedroom units, 1,056 square feet. If we go to the next slide, and the slide after this, just so the board can see the context right here. Right now, all of that is asphalt. It has two existing driveways. One of those will be closed up, and now it'll all be accessed through a driveway that leads to a ramp that goes down to underground, subsurface level parking. And that will have 25 interior parking spaces. As you can see in the next slide, everything around this property is of scale of four stories. The layout of the floor plan, so our lower level, as I mentioned, would have the underground parking with 25 spaces. That would house a trash room, sprinkler room, and storage area. As we go up to the first floor, that would house our main entrance mailroom elevator. This building would also have amenity space with a 444-square-foot gym for the building and a 276-square-foot conference room or media room. That would also house our bike room for 40 bike spaces and eight units. And four of those units would have exterior patios. We then, the second, third, and fourth floors are all 10 units housed, and those would all, eight of those units each would have balcony space as well. If we could just go down to the last slide, it'll just show the board a better rendering of the exterior and the garage entrance. Should be after the elevations. Yes, next slide, right, next one, yep, right here, perfect, thank you. That would just show the ramp and garage door that would lead down to the garage level. Just to go over the violations that were mentioned. This use violation, it's a 3F district, although we, buildings all around us are apartment-style. So MFR, we need use variance, additional lot area. FAR, 2.5 and 0.8 is what would be allowed. Our building height is four sto, we're proposing four stories. We tried to keep that height as low as we could at 41 feet 6 inches, and what's allowable under the code is 35. For usable open space, we do have a 20-foot setback. It'll be green space. But what's required is 30 rear yard. We're proposing 20. Front yard, we would now be modal to the buildings, where our existing buildings are sort of a hodgepodge, one behind the other, on asphalt. And then our parking spaces, as I mentioned, we are providing 25. So we would have a parking violation as well. This did go before the BPDA Board. It was approved back in April of 2022. I can pause to answer.
Mr. Drago, can you remind, why is this here for rediscussion?
It was, it was a small board, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. So you took an administrative deferral?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. All right, Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are good. I think, really, you know, I do think it's consistent with certainly part of the street, and there is some four-story buildings. So I think with the outdoor space and the affordability, I think it makes some sense. I think, I do think there could be a little bit more work done on the landscape plan in terms of maybe some trees, but that's something we can address for the BPDA. But I think in general, I feel like the proposal seems to work fairly well for its specific site.
Okay, any questions from the board? We've got some background noise. If we could get rid of it, that would be nice. Thank you. Anyone here to testify either for or against the proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment from the board. This went through an extensive community process. There were some concerns raised from community members. We're not happy with the alleged support track record from the applicant. However, there's been a number of changes made to this proposal. They're now up to 21% affordability regarding IDP, as well as switch over to condominiums. With that, the Austin Civic Association decided to go in non-opposition, and Brighton-Austin Improvment, Brighton-Austin Improvment Association voted to support this proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair Secretary, here we also have letters of support.
Good afternoon. This is Marva Craig from Counselor Craig's office. The counselor would like to go on record in opposition to this project. Your opponent owns hundreds of units across Austin and Brighton, and the proponent has consistently failed to provide adequate and safe housing to Austin-Brighton residents. Over the past 10 years, the proponent has received approximately 675 building and property violations and code enforcement violations, and this includes 50 such violations in 2022. For that reason, we, the counselors proposed to this project. We'd also like to add that we have had issues where a project goes through BPDA review, is approved as a condo, and then winds up as rental units after construction. So we are concerned with that happening again and also with the non-compliance in terms of owner occupancy restrictions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a few raise hands here. Start with you, Tony.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. Like to echo all the comments made so far. This project got off to a rocky start in the sense that, as the counselor's office mentioned, the proponent that was proposing the project, some of its past history with certain members of the association. And then we also had some of the older members who objected to the taking down of the two buildings. But since it has been changed for a condominium project, 21% affordable, LEED gold, that helps soften the opposition to the project, and therefore, we're going to defer judgment to the board. But to reiterate what the counselor's office said, and this is extremely important, and we would appreciate a strong commitment from the proponent on this if it gets approved, is that condo docs be filed as soon as the building is fully constructed and that the proponent puts all the units up for sale on the public market and that they not be simply rented out by the proponent as condo units. We, we want these to go on the open market. We want ownership to change on each of these units, and therefore, we would appreciate a strong commitment from the proponent to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Harry, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Harry Patel. I'm the business owner from local community. I'm in full support for 14 Gardner.
Okay, thank you. MJ?
I'm MJ. Yeah, MJ, I live in, on Gardner Street. I'm in full support of this project. I believe it's going to be very conducive to the community. Not only will there be jobs created, there are condos going to be created, and the neighborhood in the area does need a facelift. Hamilton did some projects over 83 Gardner, I believe also 41 right now. It looks beautiful. The town is lively now. There's more community support behind, and there's commercial spaces going up, and I'm in full support of this project being finalized, hopefully.
Thank you.
We got you.
John?
Yeah, hi, how are you? I'm immediate a butter. I'd like to support the project. We're in dire need, especially for affordable units. I stress it. We need more.
Okay, and then, so you have an email address here, ASWEI8. Can you state your name and address for the record, please, once I unmute it? Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Abdullah Sway. I'm a neighbor of this project. It's a great building.
Sousie, what's your address?
87 Harvard Ave.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a great, it's a great, I'm full supporter of this, any project. Improve the neighborhood, and this building is great.
Okay.
Full support of it.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, then, I have someone on the panel aside. Minor and Annabelle, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Minor Perez, representing the Carpenter's Inn. We want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, Annabelle Gomson, the Brighton-Austin Improvment Association. We'd like to go on record in support. This project has evolved a lot. It is consistent with other projects on the street, and it is 21% affordable for sale homeownership, which is important. And it is LEED certified. And speaking to the concerns of the other, this project is being sold, transferred to homeowners, which I think is important, and it resolves those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one additional raise hand for Victor. Send a request to unmute you. Name and address for the record, please. Can you speak up?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. You can unmute a little better.
My name is Victor Fonseca.
My name is Victor Fonseca, I'm located on 16 Gardner Street, and actually rent a unit practically across from this structure. I think that this project is a great idea, it's keeping with the current trends going on pretty much all around the Austin City, and it'll give a wonderful opportunity for some of these newer generations, you know, coming into the city to have some homeownership here in the Austin area.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it, from his hand.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPA design review. I guess I don't know, we can add something about the condo units, I assume those will go...
Yeah, no, I think we can, with an additional proviso, that we understand that these will be condominium units.
Okay, so I'll make a proviso, sorry, BPA design proviso, and the understanding that these will be marker rate for sale condos, besides obviously the affordable housing, and they'll go through their process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yep.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
I too am in support. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 1296380, 49R Emery Road, there's a companion case, BOA 129, 1296381, 49 Emery Road. This is 49R Emery Road, to confirm existing structure as a bond, and convert to a single family home, new dorm, renovate, two dwelling structures on the one lot, the existing two family, nowhere to be done, this is one of two buildings on the same lot. The violation's Article 51, Section 9, open spaces insufficient. Article 51, Section 57.2, existing building alignment conformity. Article 51, Section 57, one building behind another building. Article 51, Section 57.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 51, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, side yard is sufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. This is the 49 Emery Road, nowhere to be done. Violation's Article 51, Section 9, open spaces insufficient. Article 51, Section 57.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 51, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record. Mr. Fortune, my apologies for having you to have to read that all into the record. Attorney Ryan Spitz Adams in Marancy with the business address of 168 8th Street, South Boston, we're going to seek an administrative deferral.
Okay. Will they make a motion for the referral?
I'll second that.
All right, you're going to say, Mr. Fortune, some time. All right, there's been a motion made, and seconded, Mr. Fortune.
I'm going to talk to legal counsel, do we want to do 15, all right? Mr. Chair, I just talked to legal counsel, I have to leave at 2:30, I mentioned maybe we could do this on the 15th of November, instead of into the new year in January. So if the applicant is okay with that, we can move this to November 15.
Yes.
At 11:30.
Great, perfect. I still need to get a roll call on the motion.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes.
Mr. Rogero?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, okay, we got a date?
We're going to do 11:15 at 11:30, so November 15th, 11:30.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is anybody else going to move forward on their projects, or are we going to, I'm trying to guess, I'm trying to do as fast as I can, is River Street going to move forward?
Yes, and I'm ready to go.
Okay, and the calling next case, calling BOA 1349982, 1318 to 1320 River Street. This is a rec, a four-story mixed-use structure, consists of 30 residential units, levels two and four, and ground floor coffee shop, small takeout restaurant, enclosed ground floor parking for 30 vehicles, stacker parking. Violation's Article 69, Section 29.5, off-street parking design, stacker parking. Article 69, Section 30.2, traffic visibility across the corner. Article 69, Section 29, off-street loading, parking and loading. Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking and loading, parking. Article 69, Section 30.1, conforming to existing building alignment. Article 69, Section 8, MFR in a 3F is forbidden. Article 69, Section 8, small takeout restaurant is forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 69, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 69, Section 9, usable open spaces insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 69, Section 9, the side yards insufficient, and Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is deficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, attorney John Pulgenio, on behalf of the applicant, Bobbya Patel. With me today is Mike, Mark Joyce and John Sale, who are the team architects. This is 1318 River Street, High Park, zoning is 3F, 4,000, this lot size is 10,732 square feet. This proposal is located at the former Junius Automotive Repair Building at the corner of River Street and Business Street. The proposal is to raise the existing cement auto building and construct a four-story mixed-use development with 30 residential units and 30 off-street parking spaces. This proposal is directly adjacent to the High Park train station. Violations, we have use, MFR and retail in a 3F district. Use, retail is forbidden in a 3F zoning sub-district. FAR, 0.5 allowed where 245, height, three stories, 35 feet, with four stories, 44 feet, open space, side yard, this building is surrounded by a brick wall, excuse me, a concrete wall, and that will remain in place, so that is existing. Rear yard, the same thing with a concrete wall, and parking, loading, it's two spaces for dwelling in it, we're proposing 30 spaces for 30 units. The program of the building is three levels of residential, each floor is identical, nine studios, average in size 520 square feet, 12 one-beds, average size approximately 650 square feet, and nine two-beds, average size is approximately 925 square feet. There will be new retail space located in the first floor that will be approximately 1,500 square feet. This proposal went through a three-and-a-half-year process, including an Article 80 process during which both the BPA and transportation, as well as the BTD, asked the development team to use the PIC process to discontinue one side of Business Street near a road triangle memorial, and increase green space for a public park. That was a press from the city, and they thought two-way traffic on both sides of this triangle was a pedestrian hazard, especially in light of traffic to the commuter train and to the train station itself. Again, this will create a public green park that is not part of this proposal. This park will be 3,000 square feet and is used by everybody. Additionally, we've exceeded the required affordability, we're designating five units as affordable at 17%, and that's it at this point, I'll turn it over to any questions from the board members.
Yeah, just remind, Mr. Pulgenio, remind us why this is here for rediscussion?
It was another day that we didn't have enough members, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. All right, talk about the parking, walk us through the parking again.
Sure, so the parking's located on the first floor, it's access off Business Street, so this, this project is on the corner of River Street, and it's right next to the train station. You come in off Business Street, and that will be the access to the parking garage, and it will be one space per unit.
Okay, all right, and is there stacking?
There is stack parking, yes.
Okay, all right.
And can you talk about the affordability and the type of units for the IDP units?
Sure, good question, so it's a mix, so we have twos, ones and studios, I think we have two ones, two studios, and one two, and 70% A-line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, how are the drawings?
Drawings are, are fine, no question on the drawing, and I think the, the change in the public park in the corner, it seems great. I guess I have one question, it's just point of interest for, actually, maybe Mr. Hampton. It seems like a lot of parking, a one-to-one ratio, or something that's right across from the train, and it's stacker, so that's causing issues in cost. Do you have a sense of why that ratio is so high?
I couldn't answer that.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, I know it went through Article 80, that's why you, we find it's just...
Yeah, so we started out with a much less parking ratio, you know, through the electeds, as well as the community, they felt like at least one-to-one. We were a five-floor building, we reduced the height to four stories with one-to-one parking, and they seemed happy with that. The park itself, as you can see in this illustration that's before you, that has nothing to do with our project, that will be an open park now that will block one side of Business Street, because if you can imagine, you have the triangle coming down Business Street with two-way traffic on one side of the triangle, two-way traffic on the other, so BTD and BPA Transportation thought that was a pedestrian hazard, so they requested this. But again, this is a public park that can be used by anybody in High Park to add its green space.
I think it's great, I love the park, I think it's awesome, I just was wondering about the parking ratio. No other questions for me.
Okay, is anyone here to testify either for or against the proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. This proposal's gone through an extensive community process over three years. Our office received a number of letters, majority in support, we had 30 signatures that were sent to the board for review before this project was deferred back in August. We also received letters of opposition sent to the board prior to this review, one was, one of which was from a family that lives on Business Street, and the proposal, as well as the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association and the Gru Park Neighborhood Association. People are very pleased about the proposal to have a public park open to the public, however, there are concerns regarding how the traffic might be impacted during this construction period, and the River Street Bridge is currently shut down, and its replacement will not be open at least until the spring of 2025. There's been concerns that trying to avoid this area and taking Clary Street will be, will be jammed up, and this can lead to dangerous situations. With that, we defer to the board, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board, Jordan Frey is here from Councilor Ricardo O'Royals' office. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. We want to point out the 17% affordability, the fact that they worked with the community for over three years to reduce the height and floors, increase the parking to one-to-one, and of course, the community benefit of the green space in the form of a park. So we, again, we have on record support of this, thank you.
I have a couple of raised hands here, Cindy, go ahead.
This is the, the council, the city region's office, would like to go on record and support the project.
Thank you, Minor.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, minor for us representing the Carpenter Union, on behalf of all of our Boston residents, we're going to go on record in support of this project.
Thanks, okay, we have about eight raised hands here, Mr. Chairman, did you want to go now? Benign now?
All right, well, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask everybody to be extremely quick and just say whether you're support or oppose, and, and one reason why, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, go ahead, name and address and...
Oh, hello, my name is Lauren Spiny. I own 1326 River Street, which is a direct abut to this project. I did send a letter of opposition into the board, I don't think it was necessarily mentioned when they were listing it, but I wanted to point that out. If you can bear with, I just literally have seven sentences to cut through. I do strenuously oppose the height, the density, and the size of this project. If all of the variances are granted, a single structure is going to consume that entire lot, edge to edge, rising four stories. It's really important for you to understand that there are four other multi-unit developments on River Street itself, between the train station and Dedham, and every single one is three stories, and every single one has frontage with landscaping, and it also has With no side and setbacks, a four-story building directly against the abutting properties will loom significantly large. And I know I can speak for myself, as well as Ms. Pidalgo on Business Street side, when I say that we are going to lose view, we're going to lose light, I'm going to lose a very mature and established tree, and we are going to lose the consistent residential feel of our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much.
But on one side, but...
Who's next?
Yeah, Peter, I'm sorry, go ahead, state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, my name is Peter Uzoma, and I live at 17 Business Street, just next door to the proposed project, and I oppose it, and I sent a letter to the Learning Board of Appeals, and the person that who spoke before me was not mentioned. I oppose this project because my house is just next door to it, and, and the view of my house will be, nobody will see my house from River Street anymore. And the traffic is, it's going to be too much traffic this way, and, and the crime, the potential for crime around the area, it's going to be too much. So that's why I oppose it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Pat, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Pat Tierney, I live at 38 Milton Avenue in High Park. I have lived here for about 50 years, I own a building, I'm a commercial landlord in Clary Square, also own a business in Clary Square, very familiar with the area. The location is perfect for residential development, the park is amazing and will suit the members of the community very well. You can almost touch the train station, so that we're going to have young people that want to come, take the train, and it's going to enlighten our business district.
Now, Mike, can I... Okay, 617364, 1445, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members, Craig Martin, Colchester Street, High Park. I'm speaking on behalf of the High Park Neighborhood Association. Because of that, instead of six of us repeating ourselves, as it'll just be me, our main contention is closing off that segment, segment of the ending segment of Business Street. You, the applicant is asking the board to close that segment of Business Street and redirect it to the other segment of Business Street. However, the applicant, nor the city of Boston, owns that other segment of Business Street, MBTA does. The board should not be directing city traffic onto privately owned land, or to land owned by another party, because the potential is that MBTA will expand, there's logic there for loading public transportation, they'll expand their station, or perhaps use that as this parking space, a parking area for, for users. In that case, Business Street would be closed off and no longer used as a throughway.
Okay.
A dead-end street, and that's a bad, that's a bad idea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have nine additional raised hands, Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I don't know, we've, I think we've heard enough, both in favor and in opposition. So can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, this is Tom, I just wanted to let you know that Mark, or like, Secretary Fortune had to leave for his doctor's appointment, so it's a five-minute report now.
Okay, so we'll also have to get someone to read the projects in the record, okay, so we're five members, so this has to be unanimous. All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with continued BPA design review. I do think that it would be nice to take a look at the River Street side and see if there could be some more relief on that edge. I see the building is not perpendicular to the property line, which I understand, but I think if we could pull that back a little bit and look at that, and then, I guess my, I just want to clarify, so this project, we are not approving the street closure in the park, I don't believe.
No.
Okay.
That is correct, that's public information.
I just want to make sure that was clear to the public, because I hear the concern this project can stand alone, at least if we vote in favor, on, without, with or without the park, that will happen outside of this discussion.
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's my motion, with BPA design review for the project generally.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, okay, Mr. Fortune's gone, so Mr. Rogero?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Piñato?
Yes.
Ms. Loeb?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Can I ask, yeah, yeah, Joe, yeah, please, why don't you pick over, yeah?
All right, I didn't keep track of deferral, so...
Okay, Magnolia Place has been deferred, and so has Webster.
I think we're on Maverick, I believe, 273 Maverick.
And so is Ezeco, so we're, yeah, yeah, the...
All right, so I, so I'm going to read it into the record, I'm going to then recuse myself in due time after.
If you, no, no, you know what? No, no, if you recuse yourself, we have a four-member board, we can't, can't take action on that, unfortunately.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's attorney, it's the record, this is our further deferral, because we had a notice issued last time, and probably did not have a five-member board at the last, the last hearing. Is it possible...
Is it possible, this project's been around for a while, is it possible to get a date quicker than the typical January date basis?
Let's ask Mr. Broome.
So, Mr. Chair, we could do November fifteenth. There's a seven-member board. It's actually the same board as today, so I consider you a lot to recuse, but it's also a lighter day, so it shouldn't, it won't be overburdenous, I don't think.
And I don't want to overstep. Is it possible to be the first case on for reconsideration? Just to make sure we have that.
We sent an email to the admin staff about that.
Don't wish your luck, Mr. Lins.
And a happy birthday to you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make sure I got that in before the record.
Thank you. That's, yeah, the birthday wishes will be to get this meeting over with, right?
Yeah, understood, understood.
Do we need to, do this get read to the record and then a deferral? I think we need to read it.
Yes. Yeah, Joe, well, Joe already read it in.
No, I didn't. Calling BOA, one-one-four-four-zero-seven-two, and companion case BOA, one-one-four-four-zero-seven-five-two-seventy-three-two-seventy-five-two-seventy-nine Maverick Street.
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Second.
We'll do Ruggiero?
Yeah, yeah.
Robinson?
Yes.
Pinado?
Yes.
Loeb? And me, we all vote to defer, so now we have a rehearing.
All right. What was that, I'm sorry, what was that date, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Broome?
The November fifteenth at eleven-thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Have a great day.
All right. Calling next case, BOA, one-one-seven-three-five-nine-nine-five-thirty-five-five-thirty-seven-B-Washington Street and Moore Twenty-two. This is a rehearing of Pure Oasis to open a recreational cannabis establishment at the above- referenced location. Vote previously denied, disaffail, but have voted to reconsider it on September thirteenth after the hearing, after a hearing on the applicant's request, on the terms of the zoning code, Boston zoning code, in the following respects: variance, conditional use permit, and/or other relief as appropriate.
Okay. Are the applicants for Pure Oasis here? Is there anybody representing Pure Oasis here?
They're, the council is here. I think he's being elevated to panelist.
Any luck?
He should be.
I see his name on there.
It's Mike Ross.
No, it's, they haven't due attorney. It is...
Mr. Shepherd, Brian Grossman.
Yeah, there.
Apologize. It just took a minute to get elevated.
All right, Mr. Robinson, before we start, we are unfortunately, at this point, a five-member board. So I know that this is a rehearing, and you've already gone through the process, but I just do want to warn you that any motion would require unanimous decision of the five members. So again, I need to tell you, you have the opportunity to choose an administrative deferral, should you wish.
Understood, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate that. I've conferred with my client, expecting that that might be the case, and they've decided to go forward tonight.
You want to go forward?
We do.
Okay. All right. Shoot, then go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Grossman, Bowditch and Dewey, two-hundred Crossing Boulevard, Suite Three Hundred, Framingham, Massachusetts, oh-one-seven-oh-two is my business address. Counsel for Pure Oasis LLC, the applicant. Mr. Chairman, as you noted, this is up for reconsiderations. I think the board is generally familiar with the project. I'm happy to go into a kind of in-depth description of that, but I don't think you need it.
No, I don't think so.
Just as a reminder, the proposed location meets all of the buffer zones, so there are no variances required. It's only a conditional use. As the board noted, was voted to reconsider the prior denial that happened in July, primarily based on the motion for reconsideration or request to reconsideration submitted by prior counsel that was based primarily on the two cases that were decided, one by the SJC and one involving the Board of Appeals, after the decision was rendered. And just to highlight a couple issues from those cases that specifically relate here and how this motion for reconsideration or the reconsideration should be considered and the facts in favor of reconsideration, and now a positive vote. As the board knows, the focus is the criteria set forth in Article Six, Section Six-three, that those findings concerning compliance should be informed by, A, prior decisions of the board to allow similar establishments with similar facts. In addition, other uses that may be permitted by right, that may generate comparable or greater impact, should also inform the board's decision when determining whether a proposed use would have an adverse effect. So if there are uses that would generate significantly more traffic, significantly more parking need, but will be permitted by right with no review, would speak in favor of having no adverse impact. In Holland Brands, the court noted, you know, a number of other similarly situated retail cannabis facilities that are located near residential uses where there's very little or no parking provided. This site does provide four off-street parking spaces and a load for employees. It does involve a loading area that will be off-street, so provides secure loading to ensure that there is no truck or delivery truck that is blocking traffic, or was required to take up parking spaces on the street. In addition, multiple similar facilities throughout the city have been permitted near residential uses in residential districts. And on this side of Washington Street, as the proposed project, mostly commercial, as you go to the left and to the right of the property, Papa John's, and so on, and you have restaurants and barber shops on the other. We do note there are residential facilities in the area. Received opposition from some of those folks, but in terms of its location, it is similarly situated to a host of other applications that have been approved by the board. In considering effects for those uses that are permitted by right, there are a number of uses that are permitted by right that would generate comparable traffic and parking demand to the uses that are, to the use that is proposed. Uses that are similar that would be permitted in the NS One district include local retail establishments, banks, or even a small takeout restaurant, which the ordinance defines as a restaurant that's twenty-five hundred square feet, so even a smaller takeout restaurant as compared to the footprint of the proposed retail facility, actually generate, you know, very similar traffic.
Okay. So I mean, the sequence of events is, and please feel free to correct me, this came before the board. We denied it, I think largely based on this notion of it was in a heavily trafficked business district, and there was a lot of opposition, and that was, I think, the logic of the folks who voted to deny. And then it came for reconsideration, and it was presented again, and we voted to reconsider it, which is what we're doing today. We're essentially a new hearing to reconsider. So I think I want to stay away from the various legal arguments about why it's appropriate to reconsider, because we're reconsidering. We're here at that point. So I think what we need to do is just summarize again the basic facts about the proposal, you know, the buffer zone issues, nearest schools, that kind of stuff, and then we'll take testimony, and we will reconsider, which is what we voted to do. Okay?
That's fair. And just to point out that what I was trying to articulate is not additional reasons for reconsideration, which you've already agreed to do, is that in looking at the criteria and applying the criteria of whether or not the use is appropriate, considering those other issues that I just highlighted, inform that decision as to whether or not the use is appropriate.
Fair enough.
I think, very briefly, and then we certainly move on to the questions, but the only other thing I highlight there is, as I noted off the top, the site complies with the required, you know, setbacks to schools and other similar uses like the YMCA, so it is only a conditional use permit. It doesn't require variance from those provisions. The proposed use will have very similar hours to businesses in the area. As a matter of fact, in some cases, that's significantly lesser hours than others. From a parking and traffic standpoint, you have expert testimony, you know, in the record that demonstrates there will be no adverse effects on parking and traffic, that the parking inventory is sufficient for this kind of use. And as I noted, similar by right uses that wouldn't even need to be from the board would have similar. And one last thing on traffic is that it'll have no effect on the level of service, you know, out or near the site. The current level of service is Level B, and the proposed use will not change that level of service.
Okay. So, and to answer the questions I asked, what's the distance to the nearest school, and what's the nearest distance to a comparable business?
To the nearest school is, I don't know the exact distance to the nearest school. It's over five hundred feet, which is the requirement.
Okay.
In terms of nearest business, the nearest business is across the street, across Fairbanks to Papa John's, so it's thirty or forty feet.
Okay. So, I mean, I realize...
Businesses that lie on that side of Washington Street.
Okay. I realize that there has been a serious softening of that as an issue, but I wanted to ask it in any case. Okay. All right. Well, there's no point really asking Mr. Robinson about the drawings. You've already been through this. Any questions on the board about the nature of the business and the issues involved?
I just question. Out of the customers that attend Pure Oasis, is there like, any, like, your target demographic, like, geographically? Like, do you expect people to come from Waterhills? Do you expect it to serve most people in the area?
Yeah.
Just kind of all with dispensaries. How does that work?
Hi, this is Kobe Evans. I'm one of the owners. I think that what the goal of the city is to do is to have a cross-section of dispensaries across the city, so you're having neighborhood dispensaries, so you're alleviating traffic of someone from Austin going to Brighton, someone from Oxbury going to Dorchester. The goal is to have at least fifty-two dispensaries across the city, so, A, to mitigate traffic, and B, it makes it convenient for constituents, so that they're not traveling outside of their neighborhood to go to a local dispensary.
And I think...
Okay. Is there anything, like, I'm trying to compare, like, let's compare it to, like, liquor stores, right? Is there anything with yard dispensary that would compare it to, like, a total wines as opposed to the neighborhood package store? Or is this more like, just your average dispensary?
Yeah, it's a level playing field, and at the end of the day, cannabis becomes a commodity. It's just, you know, it's like going to the supermarket for flour. You don't necessarily go to across the town to go get, you know, for lack of a better term, sugar or flour. You just walk your neighborhood supermarket, or it's a corner store, wrap flour, and go back home.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions? All right, let's take Simone. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to reiterate its opposition to this proposal. As we previously testified, there was a lot of concerns expressed from direct of others regarding potential for congestion on this very important artery connecting the neighborhood with the rest of Brighton, as well as concerns regarding safety, it's an awkward intersection, the way that Langley Road flows into Washington Street. The road also bends into some blind spots as well. We have received ninety letters in opposition, as well as opposition from Brighton Austin Improvement Association and the local state reps. We do also want to recognize, though, that we have received roughly two hundred letters of support in support of this proposal that were provided by the applicant. With that, we turn it back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Ron Moran underlined as well. I'll give it a quick...
Please go ahead.
Um, Janet, is that with me with you?
He's not with me.
Okay. I just sent him a copy of this mail. Hello?
Is Representative Moran's, eh, able to speak?
Hello there? Hello, can you hear me? This is my...
Yes, I am.
Yes, very good.
Hi, this is Representative Mike Moran. I've been serving this district for approximately eighteen years, and I, again, wanted to show up for this zoning board, thank you to the chair and the members of the board, but as I said, not much has happened in this proposal compared to what happened the last one. And the neighborhood is clearly, this is something that they're not supporting. Myself, the mayor, Kevin Honan, are actively against this location. It's not that we're against the issue, because we have supported other locations in the community, it's just this one, in our opinion, with our expertise, does not seem to fit the character of what we would want there as far as traffic flow, and not being a something that's going to have an adverse effect on a community that lives around there. So I would hope that the board would do what they did last time, and reject this proposal because of all the forestated reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Who's next?
Hello? Oh, yeah, William Shuker, five-thirty-nine Washington Street, Brighton. I'm, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Erlich. I'm in the house right next door, thirty inches away. I have expressed all my concerns at the previous meeting where it was done, and I think if the members look in their files, they'll also see documentation I provided showing many of the claims of Pure Oasis are false, with photos of the no parking, to show that there's parking there, as well as false timestamps on the photographs, if you could go back to that slide. Also documented, if you look in your files, that the cases, the three cases that they cite that were approved, they claim that those are exactly like this, and that they had less parking, whereas I provided documentation in there from public records that that's not the case at all. They have ample parking, and they have off-street parking. Yes, if you go back to that slide, because they've downloaded those photos from Google Maps, and there, the bottom three photos are of a no-parking zone. There's a no-parking sign right under the word laundry, and I've made a blow-up of that in my documentation to you. Swat cleaners always had a no-parking zone there, so of course, there's no cars there. And if you look at the timestamps, they mention months, they don't mention day. Those are invented timestamps. Those are from Google Maps. And if you notice, too, they all end in a zero or a five. So this is misleading. They're trying to mislead the board.
Okay, okay. You made your point very clearly, and I appreciate that, but we want to try to move on and get other people to testify.
Sure. And thank you for letting me speak. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Erlich?
Yeah?
My name is Edmund Alcock. I am counsel for Mr. Shuker, and actually, his brother, Ed Shuker. We submitted a letter in opposition. I think the thing to really point out, and hopefully people look at the letter, is at the last hearing, Pure Oasis's traffic engineer indicated that they expected at least three hundred trips a day to this site, more than half of which would be by vehicle. The concern that we have is that this site backs up to residential neighborhoods, and there's no onsite parking. All of the parking from those three hundred trips a day are going to have to spill into the residential neighborhoods, where there already is scarce on-street parking, which is used primarily by the residents of those neighborhoods.
Okay. No, no, wait, we don't need to belabor this point. We get it. There's a serious question about whether this can absorb the level of traffic that you're, that it's being suggested.
And I think just one last point, Chairman, is Article Six, Section Six-three, one of the criteria is, will the use adversely affect the neighborhood? I don't think they've satisfied that. This citation of these cases, the one issued by the SJC and the one issued by the Superior Court, the SJC case in Taunton, was the city council allowed a dispensary on the same street, half a mile... And, and I, I think just one last point, Chairman, is Article six, section six, dash, three. One of the criteria is will the use adversely affect the neighborhood? I don't think they've satisfied that. This citation of, of these cases, the one issued by the SJC and the one issued by the Superior Court, the SJC case in Taunton was the, the city council allowed a dispensary on the same street, half a mile down, then denied a dispensary on the same street where the traffic impacts of the one they allowed were twice what, of the one that they denied. Those cases are not similar.
All right, we get it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello? Can you hear me? Hi, this is Aida Beck from five, three, one, Washington Street, which is right across the street, the proposed property. We are strongly opposed to this, not just for safety and traffic, but just in general to the feel of the neighborhood. Other that was already mentioned, also there's St. Elizabeth's Hospital right there. And if there's not much traffic and ambulance trying to get through, good luck. I would not want to be a patient there. The other thing, they didn't submit any safety and efficacy, you know, trials or an effect on babies for, you know, cannabis and the effect of people just coming out.
Okay, okay. We're, we're not, we're not going to relitigate the whole cannabis question. This is specifically about this site. So thank you very much. Anybody else?
Chairman, members of the board, Annabelle Gompf, for the Brighton Austin Improving Association. We'd like to go on record opposing this to pretty much has been mentioned, the traffic impact on a very high rate of traffic on that street and having any double parking or anything is going to cause a lot of safety issues and lack of parking.
Okay, thank you. All right. Madam Ambassador, I, I think we're hearing most of the same thing over and over again. Is there any, are there any other raised hands?
Hi, this is Sheila Gleason. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm at five, fifty-one Washington Street. We have our office there and already we have issues with the parking and the double parking. We can't pull out of the driveway because you can't see because cars are double parked or delivery trucks. And so we're strongly opposed to this. We'll be happy to support Kobe or any other proposal at a location where there's some parking that's more suitable, but it's already dangerous on the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think, I think we've heard as much testimony as we need to. So I would ask somebody to make a motion, please.
I mean, I'm just, I'm going back to if, if, if another business goes there, I, I don't see how that other business would have any more or less cars than this business here. So I'd like to put a motion to approve with BP, BPBA Design Review and an operating time from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. So at least maybe I'll mitigate any morning traffic concerns that the neighborhood have. But like again, again, I don't see how any other business would have any other traffic impact than this one, so.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Rogero's vote?
Uh, Mr. Rogero, this is Tom. Can I, could it also be this petitioner only?
This petitioner only, yep, yep, sorry.
This is, this is Eric. Just one quick, I mean, we can't put sunset clause, like come back in a year to see if this is not working.
Yeah, we can.
I mean, I, I guess, I mean, you know, this, I think I've been on all three of the hearings now and I appreciate the concern and neighbor. And I, Joe, I think you're, I'm with you on your, your also position. So, I mean, I'd like to support it, but I wonder if we should put a sunset proviso or they come back in a year, we see how things are going and then, you know.
A year from occupancy.
Yeah.
I'll accept that, but I thought.
Okay. Then I will second that motion.
Okay, then, let me do a roll call. Rogero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Yes.
Pinado?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
I'm going to vote no. I think the opposition has been very clear and the motion therefore fails to pass because it doesn't get the votes.
All right, Mr. Ehrlich, can we, can we do a motion on denial without prejudice or?
Yeah, we can, I would entertain such a motion.
I, I'll, I'll make it just so that they can come back. I'll make it a motion to deny.
We could do, we could do a motion to defer, I suppose, but.
Well, then we'll just keep kicking the can down the road. I mean, I don't think that makes sense. So, even a denial without prejudice just kicks the can down the road. I just don't, I just don't think that there's, I, I think there's, there's too much opposition for a business like this to go in. And well, Joe's point is extremely well taken, which is just about any business is going to have foot traffic and vehicular traffic. Some will have more than others and this is more likely to get vehicular traffic than most.
I just disagree with that. I think if a, a, a well-renowned chef went in there and opened up a restaurant, you'd have way more people, but.
I agree, yeah. I agree with that.
You know.
Well, okay, well, we are, I mean, the only way, then the only suggestion I would make is we might have a motion to defer because this is a five-member board. Maybe they'll have a better chance at a seven-member board. So if we, so why don't we have, how about someone makes a motion to defer?
I'll make a motion to defer.
I'll second the motion to defer.
Okay. Then Rogero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Pinado?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
And I will vote in favor of that as well. So we'll, you'll hope, you can try again with a full-member board, maybe you'll have better luck.
Mr. Ehrlich, for dates, we can have them come back in the November date, November fifteenth, there will be a seven-member board, it is the same as today, or we can have them come back in the new year, which I don't know who will be on the board. Can we? Hi, this is Kobe. Can we do November? As long as the board is fine with that date.
Oh, we can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
November fifteenth at 11:30 or 12:00 PM will be your next, next date.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, people.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rogero, want to read next?
Oh, sorry, yep. Calling next gate is BOA 1177912, eighty-two, eighty-four Boston Street, Ward Seven. This is a reconsideration hearing of vote, for a vote on whether to reconsider the board's decision on May tenth to deny the relief because a vote to approve the relief failed to reach a quorum. So. Right man, I'll just record.
We do have their counsel here.
Yeah, no, I'm here. I was just, I wasn't sure if you were done, Mr. Rogero, so.
Yeah, yeah. We just-
Attorney? Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Moransey with the business address of 168 Eighth Street, South Boston. As you may recall, we had a hearing on May tenth, 2022. There was a request by a few of the members of the board for elevation drawings. For some reason, the elevation drawings were inadvertently left out of the file and they were not transferred over to the board for review. At that point, we weren't allowed to supplement. Since then, we have supplemented the file.
But wait, 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 what about the supplement? We didn't have them. So, so let's, let's, so now, now we, go ahead.
Correct. So, so let me, let me go back to, so they were originally submitted with the original application, but for some reason they were inadvertently not transferred over to the zoning board from ISD. Again, that's without our fault. So since then, we have submitted, resubmitted those elevation drawings for your review. So at this point, we're, we're asking to respectfully reconsider having a, another hearing in order for the board to review the full set of plans and to base their decision on the full merits of this proposal.
Okay. Now, as I recall, yes, I recall this one, that, that there were drawings, that there were issues that we felt we couldn't really resolve or answer or form an opinion on because we didn't have enough information because we didn't have the drawings. I don't really care whose fault it was, that's irrelevant for these proceedings. But we didn't have that information. I also recall there was a significant amount of community opposition to this proposal as well.
Mr. Ehrlich, if, if you don't mind me jumping in, I don't believe we really had any opposition. We had support from elected officials, support-
I don't, I don't think, that's, that's not my recollection, but again, I do mind you jumping in. So what we, so what, so today what we are presented with is the option to reconsider, meaning that you will come back, if we vote yes, that you will come back at another date and we'll review it because we have more information that we did not have at the time of the original hearing and presumably can make a more rational, intelligent decision based on the additional information. So why don't you tell us what you, why don't you tell us what information we're now going to have that we didn't have before?
So there were a few questions of seeing where the sign was according to those elevations from different perspectives, because the only thing that was received by the zoning board was the actual plot plan, so it was tough to actually have a visualization.
Yes.
And that was made, I believe the, the motion, there was a motion to defer to allow something that was made by Mr. Robinson. And Mr. Ehrlich, I think you, you actually, I don't know if you second that motion because there was a discrepancy on the actual vote itself as well. I know there was a motion in front to support that failed from four to two votes and one person potentially asking for a deferral, but the deferral was not allowed to supplement those drawings. So again, you know, those are more or less visualizations and I-
Okay, so, okay, okay, okay. So we have the, we have all the renderings?
You do now, yes.
We have all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay. So now what, so thank you, Mr. Spitz. So now for the five of us, the question is, do we, do we want to reconsider this case because we now have additional information that we didn't have at the time it was presented to us initially? Or do we simply want to let, what's done is done and move on? So any comments, thoughts from the board?
Well, yeah, I mean, I remember that hearing. I remember Mr. Rob, at the motion originally not carrying to support. And then I remember Mr. Robinson asking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, but for a motion to defer, and for some reason that motion was not allowed. So I, I think we should reconsider this. So I'll make a motion to reconsider.
I'll, I'll second that motion. The information is in the packet. I do have one additional, if we're going to reconsider this, there maybe is a little bit of time, but, and this is a little bit selfish as a Dorchester resident, one of the bullet points for the proponent is that three existing billboards will be removed.
Yes.
And I know it says they will be determined by Counselor Baker in the McCormick Square. I, I guess, from a selfish point of view, maybe I am allowed to do that, I don't know. But it would be great if there's any way that those three billboards could be maybe documented or decided on in the interim so we can make a, you know, it's, it's a big difference if they're just some small ones that are in the neighborhood street or if they're actually substantial ones that really are an eyesore in the community. So that's a big piece for me personally.
No, no, no. Mr. Robinson, that is not a selfish thing at all as a Dorchester resident. That, I mean, I was, I was stunned when I heard that. I've never heard that kind of proviso before and I am very curious as to how that actually is going to play out. That's a, that's a broader issue of policy that all of us should be concerned with. So thank you for resurrecting that. Okay, so there's been a motion, there's been a motion they can second to reconsider. And I will do a roll call. Mr. Rogero?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Pinado?
Yes.
Ms. Lo?
Yes.
And I, I too agree. Let's re, let's, the vote to reconsider. And so to Mr. Spitz, to the applicant, we would ask for two things. One is the additional renderings and visualizations, which I gather we have. And the second would be an explanation of how the, this business of the other boards coming down would actually take place.
Yes, absolutely. And just, if I could just, just add, so, so it's three locations, which actually turns out to be more faces of actual boards itself, two locations.
Okay, well, you'll have your opportunity.
Right.
We'll be delighted to hear that. So we have your opportunity to hear that. All right. With that, I believe we are done with the people's business for the day. So see you all, see you all next time.
Mr. Chair, we need a hearing.
You got a date?
Yeah, what's the date?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So for the, for the reconsiderations, everyone, we will re-notice those under the term of the year. So we'll, we'll be mailing the noticement during, probably sometime-
Yeah, we're going to do, we're going to do that at the same meeting.
Okay, great.
Okay. Bye, everybody.
Recording stopped.